Yeah, I see you're getting fashionable now with your finger. See, you're getting fashionable with your finger.
Where do you think?
You've got color on.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I am not ready.
I was working towards that.
Do you have a big pop out there?
Yeah. That must be interesting.
I'm also.
I added a Nord VPN to the computer and it just made things. Okay, we'll use the phone.
Okay, pending issues for October first, twenty twenty four. Volume one twelve, page two oh seven, minutes from September twenty sixth.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call Roger was absent. Tim?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Page two oh eight, paying the bills to ditch maintenance.
Move to pay.
Second.
Fred?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Page two oh nine, term move, term move, promote a coom to ERS two.
So moved.
Second.
Fred?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Page two ten, resign E Cox training officer two.
Tell me.
Second.
Tim?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Page two eleven, final hearing for the low ditch.
So moved.
Second.
Fred?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Page two twelve, release the funds for JFS.
Tell them second.
Fred?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Page two thirteen, out of county travel requests.
Tell them. Second.
Tim?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Page two fourteen, additional appropriation.
So moved.
Second.
Roger?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
A couple notes I have on the bottom, the sheriff resolution. We discussed that. He is asking for the poundage. I know that we were waiting.
Yeah, and this is what that's all about.
It is getting time to discuss the farm land lease again. Um, November thirtieth would be the date. I just, this is my copy with that information about that. I just need to know how to proceed or what to do.
Is that for the house rent?
No, the land, right, the farm.
Farm ground.
Oh, farm ground.
We did, we did year by year.
Yeah.
Automatically.
All by year.
There is an option in there for this year that they can extend it for three. So that's why I kind of circled that and I just need to know what to do there. Um, the dog warden called and asked if there were any cabinets that lock at Harden Hills that would be like chemical storage. Um, that he might be able to get one or use for chemical storage at the dog pound. I didn't know if that's something I should get him in contact with Sharon.
Yeah. I can't.
What does change?
Probably he just wants to be able to lock the chemicals up when they're out there.
And instead of just setting it.
Yeah, yeah.
Good to make sure.
He was, well, he was looking for the reason. He said a lot of those are fireproof. A lot of the times the locking chemical cabinets are fireproof. And that's kind of what he was hoping for was one that was fireproof, so.
Uh, the sheriff did come in. Um, remember when we did budgets, we cut two hundred thousand out of his budget request last year. Uh, he is asking if we will put an additional hundred and twenty five thousand dollars back into salaries for dental fund. They figured out getting through the year. Yeah, and they, he did check. They don't need anything in the opers or in insurance. They just need the salaries.
So move to transfer.
Additional appropriation.
Additional.
And I'm second.
Roger?
Yes.
Tim?
And?
Fred?
Yes.
Uh, he also just mentioned we don't need to do anything now, but he is retiring December thirty first. And will take his, start his new term January sixth. So there would be a time period there where there would need to be an appointment with the interim sheriff. Alec, I'm not sure if he wants that out for public. Uh, yeah, I would call him and ask him what his thoughts are on that.
Okay.
You know, we've talked about it here now, but uh, I don't know if he's gonna make us, you know, an announcement on his own or what his intentions are. Uh, so we just need to consider sometime in December whether we're going to appoint him as the interim sheriff or whether we go to somebody else. But he's, he's welcome to either, either direction.
Does it need to change at this point?
Uh, and then on that, that poundage request that he's got. I think we just need to check with Katie. If the revised code says that the sheriff collects poundage fees on sheriff sales, then we should transfer that money to his budget.
Give me a notion.
Uh, not until we get an, okay, until Katie.
For.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, yeah. I think I remember, but it's.
Because last year we did have an over more, more term.
Yeah. Well, we've got the option of either one year or two year renewal.
Was it two or three?
Uh, it'd be for a total of three years.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Uh, one year is just completing and then additional one or additional two. And in light of the city council's decision not to resuminate, I don't think we're going to have the interest that we had before. I, I think a two year. Three year should make sense.
And then, I think the lawsuit used one of the trying to come up.
Yeah, yeah. And something should come up and just have to be between him and the purchaser, how they're gonna set up the lease. I would move to, uh, extend the, the farm lease on the, uh, farm ground county home for an additional two years with, uh, man farms in Ohio.
And I was second.
Tim?
Yes.
Roger?
Yes.
Fred?
Yes.
For the record, Tori, yesterday was a warpo meeting in Lima. Engineer and Mr. Doll attended. It was a public hearing on letting of the region to require a public hearing.
Hello?
You might as well just take your seat.
Yeah.
I thought you were back there.
Okay.
Don't worry, Mike. Don't worry.
Okay.
Good morning, Tori.
How are you?
Good, how are you?
Pretty good.
Good.
Okay. So I have a couple things. Um, the first thing, I wanted to give you rights of us. Um.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes. I was, um, not made aware of the department having been. That was last one. And so, um, I obviously wasn't there and that is why. And so I would like my name and contact information to be added to whatever list needs to be, please. So that I'm able to be where I need to be when I need to be there.
Yes, well, very. We apologize for that. And Tori, I'm sure has already taken action to get you.
Okay.
Put on the list.
Perfect.
I checked while you weren't on the list.
Yeah.
So. Um, and then also I would like to talk about the HVAC unit in the treasurer's office. Um, it's very loud, especially when the public comes in and is talking. Um, and then the, combine that with a plexiglass, it's hard, hard to hear. Um, for the most part, it is not hard for us to hear, but it is hard for the people who come in to hear. Um, even though, um, my son tells me often, did, did you have to be yelling when you were talking at church? Or so, but I'm like, well, but the people in the back could hear me. So I don't, I don't have an issue. I think probably Mike's back office there might have an issue with hearing me all the time. But, um, I just wondered if something could be done to do that and to remedy quieting that HVAC unit. Um, I know a couple gentlemen came in with maintenance and they were, um, I think going to have a vote or a proposal. I didn't know where that stood, um, with that.
I know we got at least one, did we just get one proposal from up there? Yeah, I think so.
Well, I think we were waiting on it.
Yeah, it was really high.
Okay.
So, and I think Richard is gonna see what else we can do to find somebody else to do work.
Okay.
We haven't given up on the project.
Okay. Yeah, or I didn't know if it could be relocated, um, or a quieter unit go in. I, you know, it's, and I think it just seems to be getting worse probably, um, the, the more, or we're just getting more tired of it, I guess, maybe. I don't, I don't know. Yeah, yeah. So, um, okay, so I need to get with Richard for that or is that something?
We can check with Richard.
Yeah.
See if you got any more bids, if you're still trying.
Yes, or I didn't know if that was something with maintenance.
Like trying to get several bids.
Okay.
I think that, that project is beyond maintenance's capabilities.
Okay.
Fortunately, it's gotta be something that's not gonna come down.
I was given all sorts of credit, man.
Yeah.
Okay, well, then that was all I had, so.
Okay.
Okay.
As you, I understand that, um, you requested a box on the south side. I think everybody was in agreement. They just haven't got formal approval at the board of election yet.
Right, okay. Yep, and that was next week.
Like Stephanie this morning and they have no problem, but they don't have their meeting to attend.
Yes.
So do they just, yeah, whatever.
Okay.
On the other side and a different color, we'd be able to talk to that.
Okay, perfect.
Uh, with Richard on the, taking that box or do you wanna stand at the concrete on the floor or did pass school or?
Well, I had originally looked at just something, um, kind of smaller. Um, but then I had seen a large, it's a little bit larger one. It, it probably stands this high, but it has a little bit of an overhang, um, that I feel that might be a better route to go to protect as much rain from.
Keep them as clear out as much as possible.
Yeah. So, yeah, I will print those things off and, um, talk to Richard so he's ready for it when it gets here then after that meeting.
Okay. And then we'll wait until after that.
Yeah.
Yes, yes, for sure.
We make a, a purchase. If you just run by whatever you're gonna get.
Yep, for sure. Um, and then I should, I was waiting until the end of September for the investment report, so I should have that done. Um, I was working on it this morning, um, and then, so my hope is the end of the day, but certainly within the next day or two, so. Okay?
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Somebody mentioned.
I got through the ball with it.
Uh, yeah. Just some song that was, uh, Diane, like, for Harden Hills to transport.
That's what I was reading about.
Oh, somebody mentioned C I, could we go to the C I C? Would they have to?
Yeah, I don't.
Give it to the C I C and then the C I C. If we can't do it straight.
Yeah, it's still in.
Yeah, it's still in. It just meet like once a year or when they have to.
Yeah.
Okay.
Something thought that may be possible. If they couldn't.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure whether C I C is. The transfer of, that is a real property, real estate.
Okay.
The van would be more personal property.
Correct.
Did you guys get a copy of the prosecutor's?
Okay.
I did.
Okay, well, that, that's what was on my desk.
Oh, it's been laying there.
Yeah.
Eighteen minutes.
Yep, and it, it very clearly states that they don't meet the, the, um, requirements for donation.
Okay, thank you.
Donation of a motor vehicle has to go to a government entity, government agency. They are not, yep.
I think she mentioned that.
Yeah. I wonder if maybe he didn't clarify that maybe. Yeah. You guys wanna read the letter? It very clearly, the commissioners shall not. They will need the van. Okay, we shall not. Tori?
Mm-hmm.
Um, the sealed envelope was the opinion from prosecutor's office on donating the van to H H W P. And as they do not meet qualifications for a donation, we shall not, his words.
Okay.
Donate to me. So I'll give this to you and you can put whatever font out was necessary for that. Um. Thank you. Um, these resolutions.
Yes.
The one, I was here for that vote, with these in the September calendars, don't, I'll get them on the desk. So, number twelve, I was here for that, but I was not here for the vote. So I will sign because I was surprised if I needed to approve.
Okay. Got it.
Yeah. Okay. They're yours, Howard.
All right. So we're gonna go down the list, start with you, then you, then you.
Yeah, okay.
And your schedule is cleared up for today? Like, this shouldn't be a problem or?
I would think we should not make that.
Okay.
So though we have on the, in the column again.
All right.
Things certainly greened up while I was gone.
Oh, mine. I'll tell you what, it all honestly made greened up, just since the winter.
Wow.
At least I had mine first.
They built that new farm right at the edge of town, Route sixty-seven. Find grassy, build a bare dirt, new lot, it's beautiful green house. That seed just took off.
The counties on the CCA are starting to develop drug and alcohol policies to include marijuana, use each of the boys. There's some examples of policies that other counties are adopting.
If I recall, some of these counts were some of the larger counties too, weren't they?
So I'll probably have to.
Um, we change county policies when they approve medical marijuana. And I think those same policies are applicable to physicians, not allowed to come to work drunk, or.
Right.
Or even amped or aggravated, or high. And it was one thing, walk around the cities. Streets stunk. Yeah, there was a smell, or. Lot of smoking going on.
Oh, no.
I wonder what the, what the residual effect, I forget now what they call the cigarette smoke, but as you're walking down the street or in any area where there's been a high concentration of that, and you're normally breathing, you're breathing in the smoke. Do you have, would you test positive for something, without ever smoking it yourself?
I don't.
Yeah. We need to have Tori come back in. And I hope I get my phone. Tori?
She's, uh.
Oh.
Great.
Okay.
Yeah? All right, Fred?
I'm gonna, I'm gonna hold on to Fred for just a minute, there's, there's another thing we need to discuss, if you remember. So.
All right, Michelle?
We'll get Tori back.
Michelle, would you like to?
Yeah, but if it's gonna discuss something.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, I'm gonna listen to this.
Okay.
All right, and then you can probably have Fred, because then that discussion won't be over.
All right.
This is the same way that I left my phone in the office last night, in the office last night, and I hid it behind something, didn't see it. Just gotta get Tori in here, Alex.
Okay.
We'll get Maggie to work on it.
Ring.
What's up?
Oh, my.
Turn it, adjust it, it's really nice when you have your phone and do something where you don't wanna drop it.
Yeah.
Put your finger in there. Oh, now I lost Tim. Got one other thing for, we need to put on, include on the record. Soon as Tim gets back.
Yeah, okay, make sure it came out.
Uh, A L E C W K hyphen K T news at outlook dot com. I'm just gonna double check, verify that. Yep, looks great. If you wanna send me a professional headshot or something like that, that I could use. Or I can take one, doesn't matter to me.
Over here. Hey, heads, um, some questions, Jake Fadden. Fairground, here's McFadden. McFadden, there we go, always get that confused. About the projected work for the fairgrounds. And they're working with the, with a consultant to get preliminary plans, soil testing, all of that kinda stuff done. But they're in the process, they need to know where we stand as a board, as far as financial support. So he had asked about the ARCA money, and I told him he had five hundred thousand dollars at the set site for this fall. And he did indicate that they will probably submit for payment, the bill for that consultant to prepare all the documents and get everything ready for the planning, like what we do at Thurman Mill, or like, whatever they have a company. That's seventeen thousand five hundred. So, that, that they will be submitting, that we can take out of that five hundred thousand ARCA. They were wanting to know what we were offering, or hoping to contribute, over and beyond the five hundred thousand. And you have to know the numbers, so that they can make their plans as far as how much project they're gonna take on right away, and how much you're gonna develop later on. So.
So, was that, that's beyond this year?
Yeah. It, it wouldn't necessar, it probably wouldn't be spent this year, if they wanted to know what we, at the board, are willing to consider to pay in future years as a project goes forward. Are we willing to go a million dollars towards buildings and?
Well, you know, I, I'm a little bit concerned about the art, when they're gonna be able to stand or be able to do the works.
And, yeah, and.
No, no value.
Yeah. He, he did say that there were other, other things that needed to be for the buildings, but could be purchased now and used for other things, and then go into the building later on. Leacher stalls, interior equipment, that if we've gotta make a commitment by the end of this year to purchase those, at least they would know what the expenditure was gonna be, and that it would be done, and we could meet our, our requirements for ARCA and still be able to help them in the long run, because the less money they have to spend on interior, the more money they have to spend on the structure itself. So, I, I think probably that they're going to be able to come up with the five hundred thousand dollars worth of eligible expenditures for ARCA by the end of the year. The amount actually may be expenditures, but they will have the dollar amount, and what it's gonna be spent for. So they can encumber it.
So that you would have, like, now, on the top of your stack, that would be somewhat, that would be factual for the ARCA.
Yes.
That, that will go back to the fund.
Yes, yes, that would be our encumberment requirement for ARCA.
As long as we meet those requirements. I don't know for the future, I guess a lot, that's hard to say.
I'll be honest with you, I'll be a little bit. I'd like to see more as we go into the budgeting process for next year, on that, to a certain extent.
As to, you know, the timing is, if they both worked on the same calendars scale, that would be much easier. They need to know rough numbers now for their budget, before we know what our rough numbers, or firm numbers are for our budget.
All right, so we'll, I mean, just double check and just verify, so the five hundred thousand we give them, or, or we'll be giving them, and I'll have the receipts or encumbered by the end of the year?
Yeah, yeah. And that, that is going to include some of the underground infrastructure that we're gonna be putting in this fall. So that money will be coming out of there.
So no work will be done this year, just other than?
The underground stuff.
That's seventeen thousand.
Oh, okay.
I think they're fine on doing the underground work yet this fall.
Okay, good.
I bet the remainder will be listed in the reports.
Yeah. And, and once again, I go back, the fairgrounds is county property, the buildings belong to the county.
Right.
They don't belong to the fairgrounds. We're not giving the money to the fairgrounds, we're spending the money on county infrastructure. If we had, you know, if the West Endettes needed major repairs, we would spend a million dollars on that to make it.
You know, Craig didn't, I thought of this, that we have a farmhouse out there. And they were, when they were looking for space to put this building, a new building, did they ever consider that property, the house gone, built there, outside?
I don't think so, because that's not on the fairgrounds. It's on county land, but they looked at what was contained within the fence area of the fairgrounds.
I just thought of that the other night, because of that.
And I think, I think they're pretty well set on their location.
Okay.
They found the high ground, they found.
They should be by now.
Where drainage, where drainage is best, where it helps meet the flow of the fairgrounds.
Okay.
And I, I mean, we're not, we're not perpetuating the money, we're not spending the money, that they need to know if we're willing to put a support behind their project. And I, I think a million dollars is a lot of money, but it may be spread over a couple of years, as the building process goes on. And to invest, you know, we've invested it in this building. The fairgrounds gets used by more people than the courthouse does, for a short period of time, but courthouse will go on. It's still county property. So I, I don't have a problem with saying that we'll, we'll back them up a million dollars, for that kind of difference. Well, fairly soon, because they're trying to get things going.
Right.
Because they gotta start working on, on the grounds, and get enough, and order for this consult. And get the, because they gotta start working on, on the grounds and get enough, uh, for this consultant to give them the full, full picture.
So, so are we pretty much at an agreement concerning the budget?
Yeah.
I hope you have that.
Yeah.
So that's half the budget, yes. But again, you know, making sure that we have the proper documentation so that passes the test.
Well, fair to say, we don't wanna give any back.
Yeah.
Don't hold back.
They have to spend it all.
That, that's, that's true, that's, that's true.
But then other entities has bids come in favorably, less than we set aside. We're gonna have a little bit of money left and we need to sit down and revisit it.
And, and that's, we have to keep in mind that there's gonna be probably opportunities that will come forward because those particular bids that were in place, we actually have to spend less. And so we're potentially opportunities for additional budgets.
If you wanna ponder while Fred and Michelle do their interviews and then we can come back together after that and discuss it more.
Sure.
Okay. They're all yours again, Alex.
All ready? Who would like to go first?
Don't worry. Well...
Alright, Fred.
Why the mailman deliver a letter before the lectures?
Are you gonna allow my video to continue while I do my interview?
Uh, no, if you're not in the room.
Then I'll reschedule with Alex.
Okay.
I thought it was a bit chilly in there when I went in there to turn the lights on.
Okay.
I'm doing whiteboard.
How would you see a return of investment on your million dollars in those buildings down at the fairgrounds?
I'll answer that with another question. How do we see a return of investment on this building? You have buildings, you have to maintain them. They wear out, you have to replace them. That's a county facility. It's owned by the county, it's owned by the tax...
What about, what about the MOU you owe to the Health Department? I mean, we have financial strain all over the county and we're gonna give five hundred thousand of the ARCA and now, and then give them another million dollars out of the general fund? When, when, we have so many things that are strained in our county? Not just the things that you, you know, you work here and you go to the fairgrounds and so you put money into those things? What about the other things? I just think it's truly neglectful. Put a le- put a levy on the ballot to fund those buildings. And at least then we get to vote on it. What if we don't wanna spend a million dollars on, down there as a community? Then what? Or a million and a half?
Michelle, we're...
We're gonna have to reschedule, if they're gonna have more discussion during their public meeting, then the only way that you, I, I would like to be to take that.
Okay, um...
But I'm open all day, I know you don't have a lot, so...
Okay, I'll stick around for those discussion and then after that discussion, we can, we can talk.
Well, it hasn't been a real long time, but, uh, my thoughts on fairgrounds.
Not really. I hate to speak for the future, but I know at some point they do.
Yeah, I would think that if we spread out, we do a couple of year term for you.
Mm-hmm.
And we talk, and, and just hypothetically, we say two years, then you'd be basically saying two hundred and fifty each year to make that additional ARCA.
I was, I was thinking an additional million. I was thinking an additional million over above the ARCA money.
Oh, I, I've already talked, I'm doing the tour.
No, right.
Oh, I see. I guess I understood.
Yeah. Well, I'll just let them know that we don't have a commitment yet. Okay?
Okay.
Yep. Since Tori gets back in, we sh- anything else, Tori?
No, the prosecutor's office is looking into the poundage.
Oh, okay.
They're checking ORC right now and comparing it to the case, making sure the ORC matches, because it's very case by case, it looks like, from ORC, so...
Okay. Very good. Well, Tori, you have made no commitment on additional funds for the fairgrounds. And if there's nothing else? We're done doing this?
I don't have anything else. I know Corey Noonan sent a final request on incident defense...
Yeah.
Stuff and friends, prints and numbers, so...
I'll, I'll just, you want us to listen to your view about maybe if you recall, why should we talk to Corey?
Yeah.
Talk to him.
Yeah, I saw that you had a meeting with the, the judges.
They had a meeting.
And I haven't heard what the judges want to make of it.
Well, I think the judges were for something, either Brad Bailey's approach or Mr. Noonan's approach.
But didn't they talk to UBS group?
Yes, they met over there, I saw what they said over there, but they come back and, or for something. Question is price, which would, which way if would be best? They want the caution that their way would be more expensive than Brad's. So Brad's been gone.
Yeah.
He hasn't had a chance to look at their stuff. I took that paper to Kenny to, for Brad to review when he gets back. So that's work to have, we're waiting on Brad to give an opinion, maybe he'll have one Thursday.
A, a big difference too is Brad is looking at hiring somebody locally that's from here, that would be willing to stay here, whereas the other way, we're going to be assigned based on cases and the judges said that that's never going to truly benefit Harbin County because of our size for the money that we're gonna pay for it.
And then we had some question on Corey's final numbers, the split of how that would work.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and, and basically what I was looking at is the fact that, uh, uh, the staff, the hypothetical staffer in Louisiana Forest is, uh, I don't think beneficial to us as far as numbers lies, the number...
No, I just, I thought I'd talk to Chris yesterday.
Uh, basically a staffing of about two and a half people. And that is the same staff as Pudman County would have. The, uh, remaining thirteen would go to... Uh, but as far as the total cost, if we're just getting, you know, the same numbers Pudman, our total cost is, uh, higher than what Pudman County's total cost for doing the business. So I'm concerned that we're not gonna be able to cover the bases with, you know, staffing and the Louisiana chapter for, you know, in their mod. So I'm, I'm, I'm a little bit hesitant on that.
Well, as I recall from the original phone call, Corey was trying to get the state to pay for this. Is that not panning out or...
I haven't, I can't answer that, I'm not sure. We might have to call Corey. I think Fred is saying, and I agree with what I saw, that for what we're paying, there's three entities here paying in the pot. One's getting, of course, it's Allen County, so it's larger, we're getting more people. We're getting the same as the smaller one that's paying half the work. As far, so I don't think we're getting the money for the budget.
It doesn't seem to make sense.
It, it does, to me, yeah, maybe I'm looking at the numbers wrong, but I took all the numbers down and to me it feels... It looks like we're not getting our budget for the dock. That's my contention. There's some language in here where they're working with the state, but they will become state employees.
And I, I read that sheet too. It sounded like that if you already had a public defender's office, that they'd have become state employees. We don't have a public defender's office. So we don't, we don't have that for us. We just have core appointed attorneys that are paid an hourly rate. Cause I, there's some county, I don't know whether Allen County has a public defender's office. I kind of got the impression they did. So their employees would then become state employees. And then private county would not pay them anymore, which is where he's gonna see the state's gonna pay the expenses. We don't have that, so we're not going to be relieved of those salaries.
I just, I'm, I'm weird.
Yeah, it would be interesting to hear Brad's take. I think I know Brad's take.
He made up, and I don't think he's had a chance for it, you know. When did he get that? Just today?
I'm not sure when he gets that.
Well, since our covenants, that's the covenants. Ready to?
You mean with Allen?
Yeah, I wanted to.
Yeah, we, we signed the agreement to join the group and we would have to abide by the terms. Which doesn't sound out of favor for.
I, I, I don't think it would be just a part of the, maybe not. I don't think it would be fair for two, two of us.
I heard you said Brad will be in here.
Yeah.
Why don't you run that by him or, 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 if you have to. Hey, you have a red button. I think he was working, but I think there was a final draft.
I was almost like, I'm gonna go look at the calendar. Ask that question.
I think we're hard in county council on aging board meeting seven, eight, two hundred fifteen. Eleven AM, twenty-third, the sheriff's office. Great.
Only courage is gonna be busy. It's not courage, it's gonna be busy. Well, she's got that lock.
On admission?
Yep.
This just came, municipal court just up there before the ones we were waiting on this morning. You guys went outside around, look at it. And I don't, did you give a copy of this, or Roger? Does Allen County have it?
Yeah.
It's my clerk calling. I just wanted to make sure Roger had a copy of it.
Okay. I see that, uh, we have dates set for the, uh, blood draw.
Yeah, so three, I think there's three days.
Yeah.
I don't think you have to make appointment, you can just.
Show up, huh?
It'll all be next door. County Health.
I assume there will be a form though we have to fill out.
Well, yeah, I, I saw something. There's four. Different things you check.
Yeah.
And then there's a fee each.
Yeah.
One, so they do it like P S A and all that, so. I saw nothing, I think, probably just like that. One, I guess, question. Okay.
I see that, uh, we have date set for the, uh, blood draw.
Yeah, so three, I think there's three days.
Yeah. Good.
I don't think you have to make appointment, you can just.
Show up, huh?
It'll all be next door. County Health.
I assume there will be a form though we have to fill out.
Well, yeah, I, I saw something. There's four. Different things you check.
Yeah.
And then there's a fee each.
Yeah.
One, so they do it like P S A and all that, so. I saw nothing, I think, probably just like that. One, I guess, question. Okay.
Well, it's like clerk calling. I just wanted to make sure Roger had a copy of it.
Okay. I see that, uh, we have date set for the, uh, blood draw.
Yeah, so three, I think there's three days.
Yeah. Good.
I don't think you have to make appointment, you can just.
Show up, huh?
It'll all be next door. County Health.
I assume there will be a form though we have to fill out.
Well, yeah, I, I saw something. There's four. Different things you check.
Yeah.
And then there's a fee each.
Yeah.
One, so they do it like P S A and all that, so. I saw nothing, I think, probably just like that. One, I guess, question. Okay. Well, I open out Thursday, it'll just Thursday for start here.
Yeah.
I'll be back next, next Tuesday, get that next Tuesday, how would you call it?
Yeah, yeah, there will be a session on the eighth.
You don't have a meeting on the eighth, is that what you said?
Correct.
Um, this is just a quick, just an FYI. I got an update from Richard and maintenance guys on our building tours that we did. Um, S K S addition, everything we had on that list done, completed. Life works completed. North V N X completed. Um, several things off the rest of it. West V N X is almost done. Melody Miller is still working on. Yeah, she was supposed to do, um, actually today, October first, she was supposed to start the inside of the B M B. So she's done the hallway, the entranceway doors, all of that now. It should be based on the five year contract she starts today. So we have several buildings on our list that are done completely. Life works, I, I say it's done. There's only one tile that needs to be replaced, but it's not getting replaced until the roof work is done.
Yep.
Cause it's to recommend where the last guy's gonna be working, so. That's that.
All right, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Huh. Don't think the budget for the municipal court that they actually sat down and handled it out. They're wanting to increase employee salaries by eight thousand. And they're increasing their P E R S Medicare by forty-five hundred. It won't go up near that much for an additional eight thousand dollars in salary. Fourteen, just under fifteen percent of eight thousand. About twelve hundred, about twelve percent. Yeah. Okay, huh? Add it to the file. That will get back by the end of the month. We'll start looking at that. See any meetings?
Yes, I guess, actually.
Yep. Okay, well. Anything else, Fred?
I'm all set.
Yeah?
I'm all set.
All right, good trip. Hopefully there's something to go to.
Hopefully.
Got some nice curves out there. Just shining white, this is water dripping down. See you Thursday?
Uh, we'll be there Thursday.
Yep. Have you heard there's regional planning, you actually gonna meet?
I think no, just wait.
Okay. I can cover that. That's Thursday, or is it Wednesday?
There you go.
Wednesday's fair. I think Thursday was regional planning.
Yep, seven.
Okay. Yeah, Mark's down there. I'll stop in and kind of.
Yeah, check for Mark, cause if he doesn't have anything, they.
Okay. We're all busy.
Hey.